... o'clock, April fourteenth, I call this meeting to order. Let's go and have a pledge of allegiance to Dr. Salazar.
Thank you, Mr. Henderson, members of the board. This evening, we have students from Laureles and Liberty here to help lead us in the pledge and here to introduce us to the students who will lead the pledge is Mr. Escareño and Mr. BJ Paredes.
Good afternoon, Dr. Salazar, Mr. President, members of the board. My name is Ramones Carenio and I serve as the proud principal at Laureles Elementary. Today, I have the honor of introducing to you two of our amazing Mustangs at Laureles Elementary. First up is a kinder student who is well-known throughout our entire campus for her kindness and willingness to help her classmates. She's part of our dual-language program, excelling in both English and Spanish. Her favorite subject in school is science, and she gets excited about the idea of learning more languages in the future like French. She's extremely detailed and holds the highest expectations for herself. She has a deep curiosity and love for animals, but her creativity and imagination has led her to want to pursue a career as an artist when she grows up. She's the daughter of Mr. Alejandro and Mrs. Carla Guillén. I have the honor to present to you Marian Guillén. Next up, we have an incredible second-grade student known for his leadership and friendliness throughout our campus. He's the older brother of two little sisters. He enjoys attending church and shares his nightly prayers and Bible readings with his family. He stays active through sports, currently playing baseball with Rangers in Los Fresnos Little League, but his true passion is jiu-jitsu, which he has practiced and completed in for three years. His favorite subject in school is math, but he says that when he grows up, he wants to go into law enforcement as a police officer like his dad. He's the son of Mr. Salvador and Ms. Alaida Rosas. I have the privilege to present to you Sebastian Rosas.
Good evening, esteemed board members, Dr. Salazar, fellow colleagues, and honored guests in attendance. I'm Mr. Paredes, the honored principal at Liberty Memorial Middle School, and I'm proud to introduce you to Cliles Garcia, an eighth grader at Liberty. A dedicated student athlete, she shines in volleyball, basketball, track, soccer, fueling her passion for sports. Cliles also excels in honors classes and dreams of becoming a surgeon. Cliles truly embodies our motto, embrace the struggle, pushing herself to succeed in all that she does. We celebrate her dedication and leadership and perseverance. Cliles Garcia.
Ladies and gentlemen, these students are here to help lead us in the pledge. Will everyone please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Consider it worthy of which is sand, one nation under God, indivisible,天地正正， just as God. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one unity.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence. If the parents of the students who helped us in the pledge, if they're here, we appreciate you bringing them out tonight. We want to acknowledge that. Thank you. Mr. Maya, can you call real call?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Donald Henderson?
Present.
Mr. Martin Castillo?
Present.
Jesús Amaya, I am present. Ms. Letty Quintero is not here with us yet. Mr. Ruben Trevino?
Present.
Ms. Andrew Garcia is not present yet. Mr. Kevin Montes is not with us yet. Dr. Gonzalo Salazar?
Present.
And Ms. Casey Villa Fuerte.
Thank you, Mr. Maya. We do have a quorum. Let me welcome the parents who are here tonight. We know it's a school night, but we appreciate you allowing the students to participate in athletics. It's going to help them build a lot of discipline, which will help them eventually, again, continue to do their education and come out in the workforce. So, thank you for trusting us with your children. District recognition, Dr. Salazar.
Mr. Henderson, members of the board, this evening, we set time aside to recognize students who participate in athletics, but also extracurricular. And here to introduce us to our coaches, our sponsors, and our students is the proud principal of Los Fresnos High School, Mr. Justin Stumball.
Good evening, Mr. Henderson, members of the board, Dr. Salazar, parents. We have several district recognitions tonight. Tonight, we're going to start off with our RGV livestock show champions. If you know anything about RGV livestock, these students give up ten to twelve days of their spring break out there in Mercedes. Most of the time, it's nice and hot out there, and so they're out there during that time with their projects that they have throughout the year. And so, it's a great recognition to make the sale. And so, tonight, I'll introduce Ms. Ashley Guerra. She's our FFA lead sponsor, and we'll introduce you to our livestock show champions.
I want to thank you guys for this opportunity. We greatly appreciate being recognized. We had over sixty-two projects at the RGVLS livestock show, and that's fifty-plus students, because some of the students took a amount of great effort of getting more than just one animal or doing more than just one project. So, the amount of hours is not just ten days, it's three hundred and sixty-five, depending on which species, which project that they are doing and participating in. And the ones that we're going to be recognizing today, we only have one student here present, but we do have other students that did greatly well in their specific division. Kaylee Jones in Market Hogs, she got second place, and she was able to make the sale. She got eleven hundred dollars for her pig. Scholarship winners, we did get two students, and that was Audrey Hernandez and Sienna Molina. Shop division, we had two students that really did awesome with their projects. If you were to see those projects, they are so awesome. Great work with epoxy, you know? We had Chloe Grenier with a first place and a metal clock, that beautiful artwork. Carly Grenier did the epoxy cutting board, and it got two hundred dollars worth. And she also did a bench, and that bench also went for a hundred and fifty dollars. In photography, Kaylee Jones got second place. In breeding heifers, we had Alexandra Carlos with first in open and reserve grand champion in junior. And Cassandra Sanchez in second place in junior and second place in open. So, we're hoping to do better and keep going with the tradition. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Grenier. And if the parents are here, your parents are here, please let us acknowledge you if you'll stand.
As we continue our recognitions, it has been a great year at Los Fresnos High School academically and the sports field, and also musically. And so, tonight, to introduce you to two of our award-winning programs, mariachi Nuevo Alcon and our conjunto alcon is our music director, Mr. Andy Soloyce.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board, and Dr. Salazar. Thank you for the opportunity to recognize a few of the outstanding achievements of our music programs and the students who make them successful. Before we begin, if there are any parents of mariachi or conjunto members in the audience this evening, please stand and be recognized. Thank you for your support of our programs. Tonight, we're going to begin with mariachi. This school year, mariachi Nuevo Alcon, under the direction of Eduardo Martinez and Rafael Gauzín, has continued to represent LCISD throughout Texas with accomplishments. Last fall, student Ian Maldonado earned the opportunity to audition for the TMEA All-State Mariachi and finished within the top ten Vuelas players in Texas. In January, mariachi Nuevo Alcon received a Division One rating at the pre-UIL mariachi contest in La Jolla, Texas, and advanced to the UIL state contest held in Seguin, where they also received a Division One rating, merits only achieved by five mariachi ensembles in their session. On March thirty-first, mariachi Nuevo Alcon won third place at the 2025 Festiva Mariachi Festival held in Edinburgh. And most recently, this weekend, the ensemble competed in the 2025 Texas Association of Mariachi Educators State Championships and were ranked as the third-best 6A mariachi in the state of Texas. Please help us congratulate mariachi Nuevo Alcon and the LFHS mariachi program on their numerous accomplishments. Students are Alyssa Aragoite, Leonel Bayasteros, Andres Beltran, Carlos Contreras, Genesis Contreras, Andrea de la Garza, Jesús Hernandez, Victoria Juarez, Ian Maldonado, Astrid Martinez, Valeria Choa, Valentin Paz, Victoria Rivera, Samantha Salinas, Nathaniel Vazquez, and Adrian Villanueva. And they are directed by Mr. Eduardo Martinez. Next, we'd like to recognize the conjunto. We would like to congratulate the conjunto alcon program for their continued success year after year. Conjunto alcon has demonstrated their talents throughout the school year at various community and statewide events and competitions. We are excited to share the news that our LFHS varsity conjunto alcon won first place at the statewide Texas Best High School Conjunto Competition hosted by La Cultura Vive in Brownsville. Conjunto alcon continues to solidify their position as one of the most successful and modeled conjunto programs in the state while competing against sixteen of the best high school programs in Texas. The varsity and JV conjunto delivered outstanding performances in this year's statewide contest. Our JV conjunto was given the task to compete in the varsity category and came up strong, receiving an excellent rating award for their performance. Eleven of our students were also awarded with the All-State LCVB Texas Best Conjunto Competition Medal. This award is given to top-performing students for the following instruments: accordion, bajo quinto, bass guitar, drums, and vocals. Please join me in recognizing these students. On accordion, Chelsea Campos and Ashley Almanza. Bajo quinto, Carlos Morillo, Daniel Flores, and Gregorio Garcia Junior. Bass guitar, Benjamin Ochoa. Vocals, Chloe Candonosa, Genesis Rincon, and Uriel Garcia. And drums, Alessandra Martinez and Lia Cortez. Conjunto alcon is under the direction of Juan Langoria and Rafael Garcia.
If the parents of the students are here, we'd love to have you stand up so we can acknowledge you.
Before I bring up Coach Cantu, I did want to note that our mariachi program, we didn't learn this till this year, but our goal is to be in the top twenty for the UIL Lone Star Cup, which is overall extracurricular success, where our mariachi place in the state got us four points to our cumulative total. So, we learned something new about that. So, congratulations to our mariachi and conjunto programs. And now, to talk about our district champion soccer teams and our powerlifting teams is Athletic Director David Cantu.
Mr. Henderson, Dr. Salazar, members of the board, thank you again for recognizing our student athletes. You're going to meet three of our teams tonight, our girls' soccer, boys' soccer, powerlifting, and it's exciting. Our soccer teams are both in the top five in the RGV, both district champions, bi-district champions, area champions, amazing. And each of them, Mr. Stumball brought up the Lone Star Cup, and each of the boys and girls separately earned eight points, so that's sixteen points. So, we're creeping our way up to where we wanted to be, our goal. So, we'll start with our girls' soccer team. Our head coach is Jessica Montero.
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board, Dr. Salazar, and esteemed guests. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. My name is Jessica Montero, and I have the privilege of serving as a head coach for the girls' soccer program. This season was a remarkable one, filled with growth, perseverance, and most importantly, teamwork. I am incredibly proud to share that our team finished the season with an overall record of eleven wins and seven losses. In district play, we went seven and one, which earned us the title of co-district champions. From there, we continued our postseason run as bi-district champions, area champions, and ultimately, regional semifinalists. Our success this season goes far beyond the scoreboard. What truly set this team apart was the bond these players formed, both on and off the field. Their connection, trust, and support for one another translated into the way they played the game, united, resilient, and determined. We also took part in several tournaments throughout the year, including one where we had the opportunity to compete against the eventual state champion in Class 5A Division Two. These experiences were invaluable in building our team's skill, confidence, and camaraderie. I want to express my deepest gratitude to our coaching staff. Their dedication, late nights, and tireless efforts make this success possible. Their commitment to not just developing athletes, but mentoring young women of character is something I admire and I appreciate every day. A special congratulations goes to two of our seniors who received individual accolades this season. One named Most Valuable Player, Maria Barrientos, and the other Defensive Player of the Year, Alexis Olalde. These awards are a reflection of their hard work, leadership, and impact on and off the field. Thank you again for your continued support for our athletics program. It's an honor to represent this school and community, and I'm excited about what the future holds for our team. Now, I would like to introduce our team. Tatiana Estrada. Miranda Mansillas. Sahely Guzmán. Michelle Soto. Gisele Larraga. Damaris Rodriguez. Maria Barrientos. Briseda Suñiga. Madison Harris. Lila Trejo. America Guzmán. Michelle Mandriquez. Chloe Peña. Alexis Olalde. Yasmin Sauceda. Zoe Encinia. Ashley Romero. Alondra Saldaña. Valeria Garza. Sofia Barajas. My first assistant, William Thompson. JV dart coach Hector Larraga. And my JV light coach Omar Gonzalez. Thank you, everyone.
Do we have any parents from the soccer team present? Please stand so we can acknowledge you.
And now, we'd like to call up Coach Michael Miller, our head coach for our boys' soccer team.
Good evening, Dr. Salazar, Mr. President, board, and esteemed guests. My name is Michael Miller, coach of the Los Fresnos Boys Soccer Program, and with me tonight is my assistant, Coach Michael Garcia. Tonight, you'll see something slightly different than you do with most athletic, other athletic teams. You'll see two soccer coaches, and you already saw Coach Montero, who not only lead their programs at as high a level as any program in the school district, but are not, are in the classroom and not PE teachers like most of all the other head coaches. So, we run our teams, as well as lesson plan, graded, do all the things classroom teachers are required to do. On top of that, this season was arguably the greatest season in Los Fresnos Boys Soccer history. This team overcame adversity that went all the way back to the end of last year, but overcame all these challenges on their way to a historic season. Some of the first-time accomplishments this season, the first team in boys' soccer history to make it to the Sweet Sixteen of the UIL playoffs, an undefeated district season, a first in school history, a preseason tournament win at the Border Olympics in Laredo, not sure of all the LF soccer history, but is the first recorded tournament win in school history from what I know, a six-straight playoff appearance, and the longest undefeated streak in team history, a run that reached twenty games. Some shout-outs first to the parents. We had the best soccer crowds in the RGV and possibly the state of Texas. The crowds we brought to the playoff games dwarfed our opponents from the San Antonio and Austin area, and it's not just the support at the games, but providing meals, setting up the send-offs, and supporting their boys every step of their journey this year. Also, to our athletic secretaries, Becky Garcia and Adriana Trevino, they do so much of the unnoticed work for all of us, and it may be unnoticed, but it is not forgotten. Thank you to them. To my social studies department at LFU, my department was supportive of me all year, including Mr. Gutierrez coming out and taking pictures and sharing them with the team. Couple special recognitions. Coach Montero, just wanted to thank her again for being so easy to work with and desiring the best for my program and not just her own. Coach Hinosa, our boys' basketball coach, is instrumental in to the boys that are here tonight. Josh Trejo was a freshman dark basketball player that started to come out for soccer as a freshman. Coach Hinosa was honest with him and told him you have a better chance of being a varsity player in soccer and allowed him to make a decision based on that information. This year, that freshman became the district MVP of soccer team. Another player, Ethan Martinez, a JV basketball player this year, who also played a little bit of varsity, wanted to try to play both sports in our season's run concurrently. Coach Hinosa and I were able to work together, and Ethan was one of those rare players that won a district championship in basketball and soccer in the same season. My assistant coaches, Francisco Sorata, not able to be here tonight, he's an athletic trainer at our school. Coach Sorata, in his first year at the program, was willing to take over our second athletic class after I was removed from it. He brought energy to the program, and we are excited about what he will continue to bring to the program. We have Sergio Martinez, also not able to be here tonight, a math teacher at LFHS. Sergio selfishly gave up his conference on most days this school year to help us in first-period athletics. And then, with me today, Coach Michael Garcia is an elementary teacher at LFE, and he's been a part of our boys' soccer program for one more year than myself, starting in, I want to say, 2017, and has brought extensive knowledge and ability to build relationships with the boys that has been one of the main reasons this program has reached new heights. Now, I'd like to introduce you to the members of the team we have here tonight. First of all, nominated for District Newcomer of the Year and was selected as a second-team All-District Defender, freshman Leo Perez. Sophomore Alex Barrientos. Second-team All-District Defender, sophomore Antonio Venegas. Second-team All-District Forward, sophomore Ethan Martinez. I skipped you. Second-team All-District Midfielder, Santiago Ramirez. Second-team All-District Midfielder, sophomore Eduardo Maris. District Offensive Player of the Year and All-Tournament Team at the Border Olympics, sophomore Gio Barrientos. Second-team All-District Forward, Junior JP Isaguirre. First-team All-District Defender, Junior Joe Ortiz. District Utility Player of the Year, Junior Manny Silva. District MVP, MVP of the Border Olympics, Junior Captain Josh Trejo. Senior David Valenzuela. Senior Diego Chavaria. Senior Edgar Pardo. Senior Miguel Azuela. Senior Jonathan Ramirez. Four-year varsity player who lost most of his senior-year duo due to an ACL tear, Ethan Nolasco. Second-team All-District Defender, Senior Lacerel Gutierrez. First-team All-District Midfielder, Senior Chris Contreras. First-team All-District Midfielder and member of the All-Tournament Team at the Border Olympics, Senior Miguel Alvarez. Nominated All-Region and All-State, and also the District Goalkeeper of the Year, Senior Nico Moreno. Nominated for District Defender of the Year, First-team All-District Defender, member of the All-Tournament Team at the San Antonio Southwest Showcase, Senior Captain Vicente Tamayo. I cannot stress enough my thankfulness for my parents, for my coaches, for all that we accomplished. All that we accomplished this year is due to your commitment to the team and the trust you have in me. Thank you from the bottom of my heart. We will never forget the season we had in 2025.
Everyone, if we could have the parents of our students, please stand up and be acknowledged for your support.
And finally, for athletics, we'll be listening to Coach Jaime Vela, who brought nine state, I mean, state championships in powerlifting. We knew at some point that was going to end because that is most incredible, but we're still extremely proud and, and, and his job was unbelievable this year. Coach Jaime Vela.
Good evening, Dr. Salazar, members of the board. I will be introducing our 2025 girls and boys powerlifting teams. Among them, we have 28 regional qualifiers, 14 state qualifiers, and one state champion this year. Our girls team placed third at regionals. Like Coach said, we came up a little short at state, but still very proud of them. They worked hard, they put in a lot of hours. Like you know, powerlifting is an everyday, year-long grind. If they're not, they're getting better, somebody else is. So I'm going to go ahead and start with our assistant coach, Coach Karen Gonzalez. Victoria Rodriguez. Ellie Gonzalez. Stephanie Garcia. Savannah Torres. Maria Ortiz. Eva Krosinski. Allison Sanchez. Baschi Garcia. Nancy Leyva. Valeria Fuentes. Ashley Perez. Kaylee Cavazos. Juliet Rocha. Ariana Marine. Valeria Alvarez. Nayeli Hernandez. Zofia Perez. Angelisa Alanis. For our boys, Armando Gracia. Nick Itron. Sean Torres. And Landon Villanueva. We'd like to thank the parents for all of your support this year, and thank everyone else for your support. Coach Cantu, thank you very much.
Along the way, y'all met Ariana Marine. And Ariana, wave your hand again. Where's Ariana? She was, she has, she's a new state record holder, correct? In the Bench Press for Your Weight Division? So we have a state record holder in the house. Give her a hand, please, Ariana. As always, we thank you for this, for these recognitions tonight and for meeting our student athletes and, and our coaches. Thank you so much for all that you do and all the sacrifices you make. Thank you all.
Thank you, Coach Cantu. Can we have the parents stand up if they're in the audience? If we can stand up and acknowledge them as well. And Coach Cantu and Mr. Stambal, we want to appreciate all you and your staff do. You put in a lot of extra time and we appreciate shows, the results show. And I think Coach Montero said it builds character, and we're seeing that already here three. Thank you. Item number six on the agenda is public audience. I don't think we have anyone signed up. Item seven is public comment, and there's no one signed up. We're going to go ahead and move to item 11.10, discuss and take action to approve the Superintendent's Personnel Recommendations for the following positions for the 2024-2025 school year, A, teachers, so I'll entertain a motion for that.
Washington approved, sorry about that.
We have a motion, we have a second. Mr. Trevino?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. Trevino. Any discussion? All in favor, if you'll raise your hand. Motion carries four zero. So do we have Miss Ariana Martinez or Mr. Juan Torres in the audience tonight? Welcome to Los Fresnos. Item number, we're looking at number 11.11, discuss and take action to approve Superintendent's Personnel Recommendations for the following positions for 2025-2026 school year, A, teachers, B, media specialist, librarian, C, programmer, analysis one. Do we have a motion? Mr. Trevino?
Yes, Mr. Henderson, I move that the board approve the Superintendent's Personnel Recommendations for the following positions for the 2025-2026 school year, A, teachers, B, media specialist, librarian, and C, programmer analyst one.
Thank you, Mr. Trevino. Do we have a second? Mr. Maya? Any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries four zero. TB Rocha? Thank you for coming and welcome to Los Fresnos. Dr. Salazar, we have item eight, District Presentations, TASB Policy Update 124.
Yes, Mr. Henderson, members of the board. This evening, we present Policy Update 124. And here to walk us through the items is Deputy Superintendent Mrs. Ada Amaro Cibaja.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board. Dr. Salazar, and this evening I'm going to give you an update on Board Policy 124. It's a total of 10 local policies that we're bringing over to the board today. It's mostly some of the revisions to our current policy. So there are new, no new policies that I will be presenting. So I'm starting with CAA Local. And this has to do with financial ethics, the fiscal management of goals and objectives. This is only saying that we should disclose any fraud, conflict of interest, bribery, or gratuity violations found in federal law. And this applies to any activity or sub-awards of a federal, that are federally awarded. CDA Local has to do with investments and it just specifies, I think we're having problems with. It just specifies that any distributors of investment pools, they must be registered with the Texas State Security Board. They must also have membership in the Securities Investor Protection Corporation. They must be in good standing with the Financial Industry Regulatory Authority. And any distributors of investment pools must also be registered in good standing with the Municipal Securities Rulemaking Board. And I think all of those are, we do follow. And Mr. Vasaldua makes sure that we're in compliance. And CY Local has to do with intellectual property. And what this states is that any district's intellectual property, that is, the ownership of any intellectual property lies when material is created by a district employee. Mostly what this is saying is that any work or any products that are created by district employees in the scope of the district, of their district employees' employment, they, we as a district have the right to own it, to paint or to copyright any of these materials that are being produced by our staff in the scope of our, of their employment. DH Employee Standards of Conduct. There's a revision to the Tobacco and E-Cigarette section of this policy. And all it states is that we must include nicotine products, regardless of the product contains tobacco. So there's just a revision under that section that we must add nicotine products. Some of the examples were nicotine pouches or anything that contains nicotine. EHB Local has to do with special programs. And all this was saying is that in this, in the Dyslexia Handbook, we must add a reference to the ARD or the Admission Review and Dismissal Committee decisions. So any decision that is made in the ARD must, there should be a reference in the Dyslexia Handbook. On EHBB Local has to do with gifted and talented students. And this is just specifying that 100% of the funds that are allocated or provided for GT must be spent in the GT program to enhance the program. And that's something we're currently doing. FFG Local has to do with child abuse and neglect. It's only requiring that all oral reports, and this has to do with their site, that they're recorded, letting us know that oral reports will be recorded and that individuals must provide their contact information and their identity of that, of the person making the report shall be kept confidential and disclosed only in accordance with the law. GKA Local has to do with conduct on school premises. It's just recommending some language on prohibiting electronic vaporizing devices. And this is also in the section labeled Tobacco and E-Cigarettes. And those are all the local policy updates.
Amaro, do we have any questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Amaro. Let's move to item nine, District Reports. Number one, financial, A through F.
Sure, Henderson, members of the board. We present our monthly reports, including capital project funds. At this time, we would entertain any questions you might have. None?
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Salazar. Item number 10, Consent Agenda. I'll entertain a motion.
Yes, Mr. Henderson, I move that the board approve consent agenda as written on today's agenda.
Mr. Castillo?
Mr. President, can I approve item number five?
Yes, okay, so we'll be approving item one through four and then six through eight and pulling item five. Do you have a second? Last second? Okay, all in favor, raise your hand. I'm sorry, thank you for the point of order. Okay, we need to make, Mr. Trevino? Would like to amend your motion, Mr. Trevino?
I would like to amend the motion to exclude number five. And that would be approve consent agenda as written, number one through four and six through eight, excluding number five.
Thank you, Mr. Trevino. Do we have a second? Mr. Castillo, any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Motion carries. Item number five, consider and approve the use of open education resources, Bluebonnet Mass for grade four through eight for 2025-2026 school year, and case three for the 2026-2027 school year. Do I have a motion? I'll make a motion to approve. Do I have a second? Okay, motion, so one. Mr. Castillo, we have a motion, Mr. Castillo. Do we have a second? Mr. Trevino, discussion? I had a, just a moment, Dr. Salazar, on on the Bluebonnet, it looks really exciting. We're starting a brand new curriculum. It's not going to cost the school district hardly anything for the, the program. It's going to be grades four through eight, is that correct? Can you just add some color to that?
Yes, sir. This Bluebonnet actually generates a little revenue to pay for the printing of the, of the information. But I'd rather refer to our Chief Academic Officer, who's been leading the efforts in bringing this curriculum.
Have to remember to push, sorry. Yes, so we, we have been using a math textbook for about this last 11 years. So our math adoption for elementary K through eighth grade is about 11 years old. So we started looking at the start of this year, what was available. The state started sharing more information about the open education resources, which next year will be Bluebonnet. And so we started exploring those resources. We've had a committee of teachers that have come together at both the fourth and fifth grade and sixth through eighth grade level. We have done model lessons. We have asked teachers to pilot a lesson in their classroom. And we've gotten some great feedback. Number one, we know that we're using a very outdated textbook. A lot has changed in 11 years. Teaks have changed, STAR 2.0 has come around. So we know it was time for a change. We think this is a great resource. There's also financial benefits because there is a pot of funds that the state has dedicated that you only receive if you're using these resources, which Dr. Salazar alluded to, allows for the printing of those materials. That's the only cost associated with it. In addition, because we applied for and received the Lasso Planning Grant, that is allowing us to have $180,000 that the state is giving us to partner with a third-party entity to work with our teachers as we work towards implementing this new resource for fourth through eighth grade. You may ask, why only fourth through eighth grade? Next year, our dual-language program moves up to third grade. So we currently have been serving pre-K through second-grade students in dual-language. Next year, we start third grade. That's going to be a challenge. Every year that we add a new grade level is a challenge. So those third-grade teachers are already going to have a lot on their plate next year by adding that dual-language. And so we thought that it probably wouldn't be best to have both the dual-language program and a new math resource, after also listening to peers around us that have also embarked on this journey of starting new, using new resources. And so we're going to wait a year. Our plan is for the following year then to go K through three so that we're not overloading those third-grade teachers next year.
Dr. Stambal, can you go a little further and describe process learning versus conceptual learning and how this curriculum differs from what we were doing before?
Absolutely. So we used to teach procedurally. When I say that, four plus four is eight. I can count my little, that's very simple, but that's about as far as my math goes. So if I'm being completely honest, so. But very procedurally, how do I solve four plus four, right? And we teach kids a procedure to solving those math problems. And that's how the state assessed it. That's not how the state assesses it anymore. The state is assessing it conceptually. So if you were to look, if we were to pull up a fourth-grade STAR test today, it's really not assessed, it's got some math, don't get me wrong. But it's really, you have to read so much and you have to understand the concepts of the problems in order to solve it because it's not asking you simple problems. It's, you're having to look for what's the distractor in this situation. So it's very conceptual math. What we saw immediately in looking at this resource is our current adoption teaches very procedurally. And we know that we have been teaching procedurally. Kids are assessed conceptually. And so we need to be teaching the way that they're assessed. We feel that this resource teaches conceptually. Is it going to be a challenge? Absolutely. Is it a pretty big shift? Absolutely. Is it what our kids deserve because it's the way they're going to be assessed? Absolutely.
Finally, can you talk about the third part and why that third part appeals to us?
Sure, so we have not officially, just, we haven't officially on paper brought to you who our third party is. We just got our NOGA approved Friday for the Lasso grant, so we weren't able to bring it to you for this meeting, but in May's meeting, we intend to bring to you who our third party is. Our intention is to partner with Region One. They have come in and allowed, and done some, the modeling that I talked about that we've done for the teachers. They have come in and done that modeling for us, they have added new staff specifically trained to work with math in this OER resource. And so they will be coming in to help us develop a math framework. They will be helping us learn how to go through the lesson internalization process. They will come in once every six weeks and model lessons for our teachers and guide us through that unit internalization process. And so we'll bring, we can go into more detail about that in May when we bring it to, to approve it, but we're still ironing out the details of that plan.
Mr. Henderson, sometimes we use acronyms that, those of us who don't do this work all the time. NOGA is a Notice of Grant Award. And I, I want to take this opportunity to thank Dr. Stambaugh and the staff at, in the Office of Academics. They've done a very good job of condensing material to introduce it to teachers. There is, there are more resources in this curriculum than we could possibly use. But they've broken it down, introduced it, solved the problem instead of the solution, why we needed to make this shift in our, in our curriculum. And we are turning the corner, it's, sometimes it's hard to let go of the resources that we've, we've been implementing, but it's been, it's been a smooth process thanks to the careful planning and thoughtful approach that Dr. Stambaugh and the Office of Academics have taken, so.
Thank you, Dr. Stambaugh, any other questions or comments? Mr. Maya?
I hope I don't have to change my thinking for the last two years, because on the surface, I'm completely against anything that has to do with the Bluebonnet curriculum. They're holding us hostage, I do trust our personnel more than, than, than the state, starting from the way it was developed and who developed it, but I will trust our people, because it looks like Black Man. That's exactly what it looks like, and I think that if, once we get into the social studies area and the English areas, we may, i- if, if what we're saying tonight is we looked at it, our people, our special looked at it, and it's going to be better for our kids, that, I don't have a problem with that. But the way this whole thing was developed, and because it gives us a little extra funding, it looks like it was a five-to-ten-year plan of, let's hold back the money, and then we'll give them more money if they adopt our, our curriculum. Now, I, I trust you and your staff more than I trust the state at this point. And this chair may be vacant, I don't know what's going to happen now. But in concept, I'm completely against what, what they've done with the Bluebonnet curriculum.
No, well, part, may I, sir, part, Mr. Maya, your chair will not be vacant. Part of the democratic process is being able to express what, what you feel, and I, we completely understand where you're coming from, because we, we too are not fans of how it was rolled out or, to some extent, ramrodded. But we recognize that it's good for our kids because we're no longer going to be tested in the same way. And what are the odds that the same people that wrote the curriculum aren't also writing the state assessment? So, yeah, there's a little, it feels like a little bit of coercion, but in the end, we have to do, put our students in the best position to be successful. And our teachers too, because they're, they're working with their heart in their hand every, every day with good intentions. But understanding the rules of engagement is half, half of the formula to solving the Rubik's Cube that is success in the state assessment. So our kids can, our kids can, can get there, we, we just have to be savvy enough to recognize where, where we need to make changes, and I think Dr. Stambaugh wants to add one more thing.
I, I just want to echo that I don't completely disagree with you, but what I want to reassure you too is that, that's one of the reasons that we didn't apply for the Lasso Implementation Grant, and we only did planning so that we had more flexibility and we have the ability to say, we like this, we don't like that. We like this, but not the order that it's taught, or we fundamentally don't agree mathematically with this background. So we have spent, not me, because like I said, my math stops at four plus four, but thankfully, we have three very, very capable and competent math experts within our office, and they have spent a lot of time looking at that. We are not going to follow it just the way that it comes if that is not what we believe is best for our kids.
So for the benefit of those of you who have not, may have not have been involved in conversations about this curriculum, Mr. Maya has a little more insight as a sitting high school principal. I had a conversation once with Commissioner Morath, and one of the selling points was that teachers would no longer have to plan because the curriculum is so scripted. And that's where the argument falls apart for me, because there's value in teachers' planning, it's where teachers flex muscle, is what I told Commissioner Morath. For us, teachers' planning is a very important part of not just curriculum development, but improving teaching and learning. It's where you, you try your, your, your skills that you've acquired over time as a teacher. I can see in a school district that has high turnover and they, they don't have curriculum departments like we are fortunate or blessed to have, where that could be beneficial. But in a school district where teachers have been writing curriculum for years, where they have been flexing the muscle to say one day, well, well, you no longer have to plan. That, that, that would do a disservice to public education because it, it, what you end up with is the stupefaction of the teaching profession, something that I believe would be, would take years to come back from, if not decades to come back from. As a state, our teachers have to exercise this, their, their planning muscles. And you try something one day, and, and every cohort, every class, every group of students that you have in your classroom is different, and you have to tailor the material to the kids that you have in, in your classroom. Even the scripted curriculum offers some differentiation, but not at the level that a teacher could do if you continue to encourage the type of diversification that can come when, when a teacher recognizes who is in her classroom, his or her classroom, and they tailor the curriculum through, through proper planning, so I hope that helps.
Yes, thank you, any other questions or discussion? Yes, and Mr. Maya?
The, the fact that we're going to teach in the way that it's tested makes total sense. I mean, you wouldn't train our girls with soccer and then make them play football. I, I mean, it just makes no sense. It also sets a very, I think it outlines a plan down the road, and that's what scares me. Because we're going to put our kids at a disadvantage and our accountability at a disadvantage if we don't, in later grades, teach what is being tested. And I think some of the concepts down the road may be against something that we completely believe, or erase parts of, especially social studies that, that are there and are pertinent, and if we don't learn from them, are bound to repeat them. So, a, a, again, I'm not a conspiracy theorist, but there's a plan, there's a plan, and I, I just think that for the benefit, the overall benefit of our kids, we're going to be walking a real tight rope there, because it's just, you've got to teach them what's tested. Teaching to the test, and people who complained about that, I never understood that. Well, you better teach the concepts that are, or whatever's on the test, or you're just wasting your time. And if a selling point is that teachers won't have to plan, and that was not an educator that said that. Well, not one that really cared about what was going on in the classroom. Now this seat will be vacant, next time around.
We will definitely con, continue to urge our teachers to, to exercise their, that skill of pla, of planning a lesson. And finally, I'll, I'll, the last thing I'll say is this, we, one of the things our kids have going for them is the, the passion that teachers have, but also our commitment to go beyond state and federal accountability standards. If, if this is now the floor and, and what we're having to do is conceptual teaching at the conceptual level so that students can perform at the conceptual level, then it's our job to meet that standard and go beyond that, so.
Any other discussion? Thank you, Dr. Salazar, thank you, Dr. Stambaugh, for, again, I think the thoughtful way you're approaching it. I wondered about that third grade, I, that would very well sort out so that we don't overload the teachers at that level, so I like how you're implementing that. But they're very thoughtful and proactive, so thank you for doing, leading on that, and thank you, Mr... Okay, any other discussion? All in favor, raise your hand? Motion carries four oh. Action, eh, action items, item eleven-one, discuss and take action to approve budget amendment number eight for fiscal year 2024, 2025, do I have a motion? Mr. Trevino?
Yes, Mr. Henderson, I move the board approve budget amendment number eight for fiscal year 2024, 2025.
Thank you, have a motion, do I have a second? Mr. Maya, any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand? Motion carries four oh. Item two, discuss and take action to ratify change order number one for the Performing Arts Center, do I have a motion? Mr. Castillo? Second? Mr. Trevino, any discussion? All in favor, raise your hands? Motion carries unanimously. Item three, discuss and take action to approve agreement contracts for RFP number twenty-four dash twenty-five dash twenty with independent contractors for insurance brokerage service for the 2024, 2025 school year, do I have a motion? Mr. Maya?
Yes, Mr. President, I move that we approve agreement contracts for RFP number twenty-four dash twenty-five dash twenty with independent contractors for insurance brokerage services for the 2024, 2025 school year.
Thank you, have a motion, do I have a second? Mr. Castillo, any discussion? All in favor, raise your hands? Item carries four zero. Item four, discuss and take action to authorize the delegation of authority to the Evaluation Committee, Evaluation Criteria and Relative Weights for the CSP number two-four dash two-five dash two-one for the CTE Building Re Roofing Project. Do I have a motion? Mr. Trevino?
Yes, Mr. Henderson, I move that the board authorize the delegation of authority to the Evaluation Committee, Evaluation Criteria and Relative Weights for the C, CSP number twenty-four dash twenty-five dash twenty-one for the CTE Building Re Roofing Project.
Thank you, Mr. Trevino, do I have a second? Okay, Mr. Maya, any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand? Motion carries four zero. Item five, discuss and take action to authorize the delegation of authority to the Evaluation Committee, Evaluation Criteria and Relative Weights for the CSP number two-four dash two-five dash two-two for the Tennis Courts Project, do I have a motion? Mr. Castillo? I have a motion to approve, do I have a second? Mr. Maya, any discussion? Motion, all in favor, raise your hand? Motion carries four zero. Item six, discuss and take action to approve a declaration that certain district assets are surplus and authorize administration to dispose of said vehicles and equipment as appropriate, do I have a motion? Mr. Maya?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we approve a declaration that certain district assets are surplus and authorize administration to dispose of said vehicles and equipment as appropriate.
Thank you, Mr. Maya, have a motion, do I have a second? Mr. Trevino, any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand? Okay, motion carries four zero, thank you. Item seven, discuss and take action to ratify the technology equipment purchased from the purchasing cooperative vendors, do I have a motion? Mr. Trevino?
Yes, Mr. Henderson, I move that the board ratify the technology equipment purchases from purchasing cooperative vendors.
Thank you, have a motion, do I have a second? Mr. Castillo? Any discussion? All in favor, raise your hands? Motion carries four zero. Item number eight, discuss and take action as necessary to add, revise, or delete local policies as recommended by TASB Policy Services and according to the instruction sheet for the TASB Localized Policy Manual Update one-two-four, first reading. Mr. Castillo? Do I have a second? Mr. Maya, any discussion? All in favor, raise your hands? Motion carries four zero. Item nine, discuss and ratify the Tutoring Assistance Program Contract Service Proposal for the 2024, 2025 school year, do I have a motion? Mr. Maya?
Mr. President, I move that we ratify the Tutoring Assistance Program Contract Service Proposal for the 2024, 2025 school year.
Thank you, have a motion, do I have a second? Mr. Trevino? Any discussion? All in favor, raise your hands? Motion carries unanimously. That concludes the action items, item number twelve, closed session, we don't have anything to discuss there. Item thirteen, let's discuss announcements, Dr. Salazar.
Mr. Henderson, members of the board, I'd like to first point out that, beginning today, we're including announcements as backup documentation in your board packets. If anyone want to go back and revisit it, you can find it on Board Book. First announcement is that Friday, April eighteenth and Monday, April twenty-first, we will suspend operations to observe the Easter holiday. On Wednesday, April twenty-third at seven PM, we have a spring band concert, LFHS. On Saturday, April twenty-sixth, we have a prom at the Brownsville Event Center. On Monday, May twelfth, we have a regular school board meeting. And I did want to mention that I've been asked to serve on the, on a higher education committee, which conflicts with our June board meeting, and I wanted to see if, if it's okay with you all that we move our, our meeting to June sixteenth due to the TASSA Higher Education Committee meeting scheduled on, on June, June ninth, I can get with you all about that later. So we would, and then in athletics, we have baseball games, and baseball and softball games. On Tuesday, April fifteenth, the boys play in San Benito. The Lady Falcons are, also are in Harlingen. On Thursday, April seventeenth, the boys are at home against veterans, and we host Hannah Senior Night for softball on April seventeenth. Those are all the announcements we have at this time.
Thank you, Dr. Salazar, I would like to thank, I think, who runs our, the person who runs our speakers, and also officer for being here, taking care of us. So thank you so much, meeting is adjourned at seven oh seven.